... meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. What's next, Mr. Clark?
Next is a flag salute led by Councilmember Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered this evening by Reverend Rick Garner, Senior Pastor of First United Methodist Church Glendale.
Let us pray. O source of grace and peace, we gather as those charged with the responsibility of leading the city of Glendale. Let us never carry this responsibility lightly, but help us always to respond to the needs of the city's citizens with compassion and justice. May we listen with the intent of understanding, respond with the expectation of offering hope, and plan mindful of the ways by which our work can enrich the lives of a few or many. And may we lead with humility and grace, ever aware that our decisions impact people who have dreams for the time ahead that are not unlike our own. Strengthen our resolve to serve all, even sacrificially, for we pray in the promise that the holy is among and within us. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Clark, let me, may we have your report?
The agenda for the May 26, 2009 regularly scheduled meeting of the Glendale State Council was posted on Thursday, May 21, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Who's next?
Three under presentation and appointments. That's three A's Agenda Preview for the meetings of June 2, 2009.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I'll go to John Tuktalian for the review. John?
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of council. For the meetings on June 2, there are no items on the Glendale Housing Authority or the Glendale Redevelopment Agency agendas. At 2:30 in the afternoon, there will be a budget study session held in these, in this room. And at 6 o'clock in the evening, under Glendale City Council meeting, there are a number of presentations under item number three, under consent items, there are two agenda reports by the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power related to the Chevy Chase 968 Reservoir and Pump Station Replacement Project. Under adoption of ordinances, there are two items. The first is an ordinance related to the Glendale Management Association providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the city of Glendale and for their compensation. And at 7B is a second report or adoption of ordinance related to the GCA, providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the city of Glendale and for their compensation. And finally, under action items at 8A is an agenda report by the Fire Chief regarding appropriation of funds for strategic plan.
Thank you. All right, we have a number of presentations to worthy individuals and groups. Mr. Kasakian, will you start reading?
We're going to read a few of them out of order. I apologize to our audience and to Mayor and council due to some of the time conflicts that some of our honorees and guests have. First, I'd like to read the commendation to Nancy Sumner for being promoted to Colonel with the California Air National Guard.
All right, I believe I have that. Here it is. And we'll have Private First Class R. Najarian deliver it to the Colonel.
I was rejected.
Unlike his brother. It's a mayor's commendation as presented Colonel Nancy Sumner. Congratulations on the occasion of being promoted to the full rank of Colonel, that's a full-bird Colonel, with the California Air National Guard. Signed Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale. The Colonel will come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say a few things about Nancy Sumner, Colonel Nancy Sumner. First of all, I'm so proud that we have someone of her rank in Glendale. She has been with the California Air National Guard since November of 1981. She is a nurse by profession, an emergency room nurse at Glendale Memorial, and she dedicates so much of her time to the Air National Guard and defending our country and, in particular, helping our troops with their medical needs. Colonel Sumner has been deployed to locations such as Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Bosnia Herzegovina, Belize, Afghanistan, Chile, and Ukraine. She won the Bronze Star, and I'm not at liberty to discuss the details, but needless to say that her actions saved dozens and dozens of United States servicemen and servicewomen. Let your imagination run wild on how a medical officer can save that many lives. And she didn't have a gun in her hand either. She has received the Meritorious Service Medal, the Aerial Achievement Medal, the Air Force Commendation Medal, the Army Commendation Medal, the Air Force Achievement, Army Achievement Medal, and various other medals. She is now the commanding officer at the 146th Medical Group located, situated, based at the Channel Islands Air National Guard Base. She's doing great work, and the next stop, Colonel, I understand, is general. So, we wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you very much.
And would like to.
Well, I'm very honored to be here. This came very unexpected. The Najarians are like a second family to me. Actually, I am Rafi's boss, so it's sort of fun bossing doctors around. It's great. But I've had the honor to serve with them. I've had the honor to live in Glendale. I grew up in Burbank, and I'm on the disaster committees here at the hospital and with the community, and we have a great community. I think you do a great job on this city council. And my hat goes off to all of you recipients here also. I mean, if you follow your dreams, your dreams can come true. You guys won CIF, right? For all state? That's pretty awesome. That feels good. That seems like a long time ago. Yeah, there you go. Get the, that's up in the air. Yeah! Because you're our future. You're our future. And with Memorial, it was beautiful, the ceremony. And it's about the troops, it's about the family, it's about the support, it's about the city. And I'm proud to be a Glendalean, so, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel. Who's next, Mr. Kasakian?
Next, we have a commendation to KAZA, Channel 54, Azteca America, Hablemos De Cine.
And you can come to the podium, please. Azteca Television, Channel 27, is located here in Glendale and has been a member of the community for many, many years. So it's my pleasure to present the mayor's commendation. Hablemos De Cine, which means "We Talk About the Movies." Jorge Elias, who's the producer. Congratulations on your 21st successful season as the longest-running Hispanic television show in the United States. Hablemos De Cine not only provides quality programming and entertainment for the entire Hispanic community, but also promotes Hispanic business, marketing, and employment. I wholeheartedly commend you and your entire production crew for your creative talent and dedication to excellence. Signed Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale.
On behalf of Azteca America, I'm Jorge Elias. On behalf of Hablemos De Cine, thank you very much. It's an honor. Very grateful about this. 21 years ago, we started with a show trying to reach the Latinos with the Hollywood business, with the Hollywood entertainment business, and we're still doing it. So thank you very much for this. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Next, we have a at 3B presentation of Rose Float Association check, and following that will be the presentation of Pasadena Termiter of Roses Trophy.
Right, I'd like to send Mr. Weaver and Mr. Draymond, Mr. Draymond to accept the check.
You would.
And Mr. Weaver to accept the photo. Join the.
And with us is Gary Ackerman, the President of the Glendale Rose Float Association, presents with the big check.
It's always very pleasing to be up here to present the money. We're giving $50,000 to the City of Glendale. That's over and above the $3,700 which we paid for the entrance fee to this year's parade for 2010. We have a hard-working committee. We are looking for people to join us on the association, to make this grow and, and show the support to the city, that you guys know that this city cares about our float. I wrote small because it was with a city pen. I was trying to save money for the ink.
All right, good idea. Good idea. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
There you go, John. Take my money.
Thank you. And the group. That is terrific. I will, you must have a checkbook the size of, well, the size of this.
Don't drop it, it might bounce and itch on the head.
We don't want it to bounce. But I will turn it over to our city clerk. Don't spend it all in one place.
We'll cash it tomorrow morning.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pam McNeely. I'm the Chairman of the Float Entries Committee, and on behalf of the Pasadena Termiter of Roses, I would like to thank Mayor Quintero and the City Council and the Rose Float Association and the City of Glendale for your longtime participation in the Termiter of Roses Parade. I believe you are our second-oldest continuous presence in the parade, and we really do appreciate that. We understand that times are tough and everyone's marshaling their resources, and we really do appreciate that you are returning to the 2010 parade. This last year, in 2009, you won the Past President's Trophy, which honors the best floral and non-floral elements in a float, and we're very happy that you were awarded that trophy. This year, our theme is 2010, A Cut Above the Rest, and we look forward to your participation in this year's parade and for many, many, many years to come. Thank you very much. And here is the presentation of.
This goes to Dave Weaver, who is the Crew Chief on this. Did a good job, always does every year. We're proud of that.
Thank you very much. Nice photo. You got great. That's four wins in five years.
Which is very impressive.
Four wins in five years.
Oh, she wants to see. They want to see.
Oh, they want, oh, I'm sorry. The Alex Theater.
And it was, last year's theme was Hats Off to Entertainment, and your theme of sneak preview was perfectly fitting to our parade theme.
It was sure fun to decorate.
Next year's gonna be more fun.
Oh, yeah, that eagle. Yeah, gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please.
Next, we have a proclamation designating May 30, 2009, as Great American Cleanup Day, and going hand-in-hand with that, we also have a recognition of Middle School Recycling Challenge.
Well.
On behalf of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale and Neighborhood Services, we want to thank the mayor and members of the council for being supportive of our major event, Great American Cleanup. And we would like to invite you and all of the Glendale residents to participate this coming Saturday, May 30. We will have hundreds of volunteers who will gather in the 100 block of North Isabel Street, right in front of the Glendale Police Building, and before going out into the community to paint out graffiti and pull weeds and clean up perhaps vacant lots and so forth, we'll give them a little bit of a continental breakfast. And after they've worked really hard and cleaned up our beautiful city, they will return to the same location where our lovely committee of the Jewel City Kiwanis will prepare them a wonderful barbecue lunch, and they will be entertained with some live entertainment. So we hope that as many of you who can participate will join us. Great American Cleanup is a national Keep America Beautiful event, and it's expected to involve as many as three, two and a half million people volunteering more than eight million hours to clean, beautify, and improve 15,000 communities during 30,000 events in all 50 states. And we want to take this opportunity to thank all of the volunteers who have participated, not just this year, but in the past, who have really come together and helped to make Glendale the number-one Keep America Beautiful City in the state of California. We think that's pretty impressive, and we owe it to all of our volunteers. We couldn't do it without them. Any members of the public who are interested in participating, they can call Neighborhood Services Office at 818-548-2125 to pre-register for our event. And we hope that we will get an extremely large turnout this year, as we have in the past. And in appreciation for your support and support of our community beautification efforts, we are here to present you with your own 2009 Commemorative Event Designer T-shirts. What did you do with them? These are wonderful T-shirts, and you, the council members, all get one, but the rest of you, if you want a T-shirt, you have to come and help clean up. You'll get your own T-shirt.
Okay, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Glendale City Council is committed to a litter-free community with neighborhoods that provide residents a high quality of life, and whereas the City of Glendale is fortunate to have conscientious, hard-working, and dedicated volunteers who feel a personal responsibility to continually maintain Glendale as a clean and beautiful committee, the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale raises funds annually to support the city's community beautification and graffiti-removal efforts. The efforts of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale have resulted in a commitment from more than 800 volunteers to actively help eliminate graffiti, pick up litter, plant trees, recycle household e-waste by participating in the 21st Annual Glendale Great American Cleanup Day this Saturday, May 30, 2009. So I therefore proclaim May 30 as Glendale's Great American Cleanup Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciated.
Mayor Quintero and members of the council. The Great American Cleanup is just one of the projects that the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale and Neighborhood Services operate. Tonight, we will also be recognizing the youth of our community who participated in our middle-school junior ambassador program. The Junior Ambassador Program was created to provide continuity for students who participated in the I Love My Neighborhood poster contest in a manner that was both appealing and to encourage students to be more environmentally conscious. Students learn about three major topics throughout the school year, those being litter prevention, recycling, and stormwater pollution. Students are taught leadership skills, which they in turn use to influence their peers, friends, and relatives to behave in an environmentally responsible manner. Guest speakers, inner-campus competitions, field trips, and awards are just a few of the tools that are used to motivate students. This past March, we held our Middle School Recycling Challenge, and tonight we are here to recognize the three top schools. At first, oh, no, sorry, third place, I'd like to call up Toll Middle School, who will be accepting their third-place trophy. And Paula Nelson, principal, is here to accept the trophy. I should point out, they also earned $275 from the city's recycling contractor, the Allen Company. Principal Nelson? Second place is awarded to Wilson Middle School, and accepting the award is Ms. Arlene Milton, science teacher and junior ambassador faculty advisor. Ms. Milton? And they also earned $428 from the Allen Company. And last, but not least, your 2009 Junior Ambassador Recycling Challenge Champions for the third year in a row, Rosemont Middle School, accepting Mr. Lynn McGinnis, history teacher and recycling coordinator. And we should point out, they also earned $810 from the Allen Company. We'd like to also point out that Mr. McGinnis is retiring at the end of June. He has been instrumental in the success of the school's participation in the program. He will be missed, and we hope that he will inspire a next generation of teachers to step up to the plate and go for a fourth trophy. But I know there's a couple of schools out there that are, they're gonna start recycling as of tomorrow, so we'll see. You'll have to tune in next year. If any middle schools would like to participate, please contact Neighborhood Services. We'll get you set up for the programs, and we thank you for your attention this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Kasakian?
Next, we have a presentation of Outdoor Youth Connection, OIC program, and also a commendation to Southern California Gas Company for their donation to the OIC program.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, a lot of good things happening with youth in our city, and I just wanted to talk, take a couple of minutes to tell you about our new program in the Parks Department and introduce you to some very special young people who are here tonight. The Outdoor Youth Connection is a program offered by California State Parks, which is designed for young people between ages of 14 and 17. Its purpose is to provide young people who normally wouldn't have this opportunity a chance to really go out and see the open space, the, the, the open, the parks that we have, the scenic parks in the state. It's also a program to develop team-building and leadership skills. For the past three years, State Parks has been operating this program with kids from Northern California. Just six months ago, they came down here and asked us to participate in this program, be one of the first cities to do so, and we are one of four cities in Southern California that are participating. Our staff was very excited when they came down about the possibility of involving the youth here, and I want to invite Mark Sturtevant up here. Mark really took the lead on this, was very excited about it, took the lead, and I'd like Mark to introduce the program and the kids to you. Mark?
Thanks, George. As George mentioned, this is a program designed to put kids in touch with nature, particularly kids who don't normally have that opportunity, but it's really more than just going camping. It's, it's about team-building, it's about creating leadership skills, and that's really kind of the cornerstones of the program. These kids not only learn these skills, but when they come back to the community, they're charged with going out and growing this program, doing community service, and creating more events for, for their friends and, and their neighbors. Now, our kids just got back from the Silverwood Lake State Recreation Area up in the San Bernardino Mountains, and we have a few slides we want to show you of their, their trip, but rather than have me tell you about them, I'm gonna ask some of our participants to come up and talk to you a little bit about the program. So let me introduce Jennifer and Michelle Regalado, Itzel Mendez, and Daniel Ward.
Right there, we're all signing in. Arms, they're asking us if we ever went camping before and stuff like that. Remember, we barely came there.
Right here, we're setting up tents, and that was our first time setting up a tent because it was our first time camping, so we pretty much looked at other people to see if we could make it, and we were able to make it. This is a picture of us seeing other people's slideshow when they went camping in different places, and we were just all together, and it was really cool.
That's us making food. We're in different groups. We had to cook, clean, and that stuff.
That's us washing dishes.
Good, no paper plates.
This is some of the exercises we had to make, or we had to do, and it was interesting because we each had to, like, every 10 seconds, we had to meet a new person, and we had to somehow trust that person, and it was pretty cool.
We're supposed to make that. Who, who go down? We didn't go down?
Yeah, we had to be a team, so. This is where we, it was a game, I think it was rochambo.
Yeah.
And first, we start off with like two people, and we play, it's like rocks, paper, scissors, and we went to other groups as soon as you, like, won. And then at the end, we were all one group, so we all won at the same time, so nobody lost. In other words, we were all in a team at the end.
I heard fishing, and the only one guy caught a fish that day. It was pretty fun, I guess.
Yeah. Oh, that's me kayaking. It was my, it was my first time kayaking. It was really fun. At first, I didn't know how to paddle, but then I got the hang of it, and it was pretty cool.
Us planning the two other events we're planning. We got together, they gave us like about an hour to plan it out.
We also had a time to plan a skit that we had to make.
Yeah.
And this is the awards that we completed the camp.
We saw that on the poster, and we decided to try it.
That's all of us. That's all of us in the camp.
Everyone.
Yeah.
From different cities?
Yeah. There was like San.
Lakers Fields and.
San Bernardino, I think.
No, that was where we went, San Francisco.
Dog Gardens. Dog Gardens. Yeah.
Very good, very good. What grade are you in?
I'm a freshman.
We're both seniors.
And we're freshmen.
But that didn't matter, huh?
No. That doesn't matter.
In Glendale?
You got to boss him around, though.
Yeah.
Can you tell the council what you're going to be doing next?
Oh, next, we plan to do a cleanup at Bolsachica State Beach. We plan to plant trees and also help keep the beach clean, and maybe possibly do a hike that day, somewhere around there.
Yeah. And then for the second part of the project, we're gonna be taking people, each of us are gonna take five friends that have never been camping or have never experienced, like, outdoor in the nature, wherever. We're gonna be taking them to Mission Wilderness Park in the camp. And to help them, teach them what we, what we were taught, like, leadership, teamwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, our trust. And to meet new people.
Very good. Great program.
What schools do you go to?
Glendale High. Glendale High.
Oh, I am a moderate.
Maybe you can take Mr. Weaver camping.
I might learn something.
All right, guys, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So obviously, obviously, this council and previous councils has been very generous in the purchase of open space in Glendale, and this is part of our effort to return the favor, to find kids and families that we can bring out into our open space, and we'll be building on this, which is a state program. We're gonna be building on this with our own camping program. on this with our own camping programs in the future. Alan, I'm going to turn it back over to George, who has a few more remarks.
Just a few more minutes, and as you can see, the kids will remember this for the rest of their life. And not a lot of people understand, a lot of kids don't get to see any of this, don't get to go camping, so this is a tremendous experience for them. I wanted to just take a few minutes to recognize the staff people that were involved, because without them, this wouldn't be possible. And I'm really proud to work with these professionals who really do care about the kids. First is Jeff Weinstein, and Jeff is here, I think. Jeff is our Trails and Open Space Specialist, and he also took the lead in getting the program off the ground. Walter Alvarez is here. Walter is with our Youth and Family Services Program, who works with the at-risk youth. And Walter helped identify the kids for this program. And also, Nune Sogamonyan and Dave Moreno, who were chaperones, who actually did the camping experience with the kids. So not that it all went smoothly, but I mean, they got it done. And while all of us are cutting, I think it's important to note, and I think it's the next item, we didn't have any money for this. And if you don't mind, I can just segue right into where we got the money from. We needed money for this program, State Parks didn't have any money, but we really wanted to get this thing done. And somebody that came through for us was Tony Tartaglia. And Tony came through and provided the funding needed for this program. And I think it was to the tune of $7,500, if I'm not mistaken. There was $5,000 initially and then came through with another $2,500. So we really wanted to thank Tony, and I think you, the mayor, have something for Tony. So thank you very much for allowing us the time.
We have a proclamation to the Southern California Gas Company with much appreciation for your generous donation to the Outdoor Youth Connection and Outdoor Education and Leadership Program for Youth, sponsored by California State Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I enjoy visiting you guys. You know, the gas company has been a participant of a lot of the youth programs over the years here in Glendale, one of the first participants for your Glendale Youth Alliance projects. And we do give scholarships every year. But when I got a call from Mark and George about this one, it was particularly close to my heart, having been on Park and Recs in the past and an avid hiker myself. I did think this program was very, very beneficial for our youth here in Glendale. Not so much just for the camping experience and the life skills training, but when they're tasked with coming back and coming up with a project to give back to the community, I think that's so necessary in giving our youth a perspective of life. We all are involved so much in civic events and community activities, but as you know, I'll say myself, we're all aging. And I'd like to see more of our youth get involved, and I think this particular kind of program encourages them to stay involved. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a commendation to AYSO Glendale Sectional All-Stars U-14 Boys Team.
All right, let's have the AYSO come to the podium. Everyone. Right, very, very impressive. It's a mayor commendation presented to AYSO Glendale Sectional All-Stars U-14 Boys Team. And it reads as follows. Congratulations for winning first place in the AYSO Region 88 in the Under-14 Boys Sectional All-Star Competition. This is the first time in Glendale's history that a team from Glendale has won the California State Championship. And that included AYSO All-Star Teams, a competition, as AYSO All-Star Teams from California, Arizona, Nevada, Washington, and Oregon. We are very proud of your outstanding accomplishment. It's signed Frank Quintero, the mayor of Glendale, and I hope all of you have a future with either Barcelona or Real Madrid. Either one, either one of the two.
Congratulations. Ben, just walk by the mic and we want to hear your name and where you go to school.
Come up here. Get a good angle. Come on up here, people. Get behind us. Come on, get behind us if you want. Get a good angle.
That's all right.
Okay? Hey, pretty, you're blocking. It's going down. Okay.
Right, sir. Thank you.
Mayor Quintero, council members and staff, good evening. My name is Serge Gracassian and along with Jeff Parent and Tony Friedman, I think Jeff is here. We had the privilege of coaching Glendale Region 88 Glendale Lacrosse Center Under-14 Boys Sectional All-Stars Team. As you know, we finished first in the state championship this spring. First, on behalf of the players and their parents, I would like to thank you for the honor and opportunity to be here tonight to introduce the players to you. Quick recap of our season, we started in December of 2008. And after winning the first two stages of the tournament, we qualified for the state championship in Davis, California on March 29, 2009. And as you mentioned, we were the first team from Glendale, the boys team from Glendale, which finished first in the California State Championship. I just wanted to emphasize one thing, that you know, our record was, you know, 15-0, but I think what, I think what was more important, the high level of sportsmanship and fair play that those boys demonstrated during the season. And I also have to say that during the entire season, they represented the city of Glendale and the Region 88 very well, and we're all proud of them. We would also like to thank the city of Glendale and the Park and Recs Department for providing AYSO much-needed field, and you can always take more. So thank you very much again for the honor of being here.
Okay, I'd like to have, Ms. Friedman is going to hand pins, city pins. Take one for a brother, sister, or girlfriend if you want. But then I'd like to also have you come to the mic individually and give us your name and where you go to school.
Hi, I'm Erin Gutierrez and I go to St. Francis of Assisi in Silverlake.
Next.
My name is Cole Roddemaker and I go to Flintridge Prep School.
Hi, I'm Matthew Ryan and I go to Rosemont Middle School.
Hi, I'm Graham McCadda and I go to LCHS.
Hi, I'm Nora Gazi Condon and I go to Wilson Middle School.
Hi, I'm Louis Lopez and I go to Hoover High.
My name is Euro Ariana and I go to Robert Fulton College Prep.
Hi, I'm Ronnie Damaschke, I go to Rosemont Middle School.
I'm Pablo Sotio, I go to Wilson Middle School.
I'm Russell Carpenter, I go to Rosemont Middle School.
I'm Pablo Hernandez, I go to Wilson Middle School.
Hi, I'm Alan Gracassian and I go to Wilson Middle School.
Hi, I'm Ari Se Guzarn, I go Roosevelt Middle School.
Hi, I'm Andrew Friedman and I go to Incarnation.
Hi, I'm Nick Parent and I go to Village Christian.
Very good, very good. Thank you, all of you. Congratulations. Commissioner? And we have the commissioner of the AYSO, Aldo. Is somewhere in the audience, Aldo, where, yeah, there he is. Why don't you come to the podium, please, just for a minute? I know how hard you've worked throughout the years, and I want to congratulate you personally, all the hard work that you've done and your board of directors, it paid off with this victory, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. We're very proud of these boys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move to the next presentation, let me say, forget Barcelona or Real Madrid. What you have to really work for first is to try to get a scholarship for college. Lots of college scholarships out there. Next, Mr. Kasakian.
Last presentation, last but not least, is a proclamation designating May 2009 as Mental Health Month.
The proclamation will be for Verdugo Mental Health, and Lynn Brandstater, I believe, is here to see that. Whereas one in four Americans will experience some form of mental illness, disability, or substance abuse disorder in their lifetimes, and whereas Americans with chronic and disabling mental illness lose 10 to 25 years of life compared to other Americans, mental health parity for benefit coverage and access to care will soon be a national policy. Our citizens need to know treatment does work, and the city of Glendale joins the state of California and the United States, celebrating May 2009 as Mental Health Month, and encourages its residents to support mental health care and recognize Verdugo Mental Health, VMH Care, and all treatment providers for improving people's lives. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members.
Thank you, Lynn. Congratulations. You have a beautiful facility there now. Every time I eat a Damon's, I mean, I park in there.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's an honor to be recognized, and I feel very celebratory because of all the prior presentations and the emphasis on our youth. And sometimes celebration and mental illness don't come together in most people's heads. But the whole point of May as Mental Health Month is to celebrate the fact that access to treatment is available in every community and treatment does work. And we can't do it alone. I noticed, for example, before I came up here, Paula Devine with the Commission on the Status of Women and who worked so hard with the YWCA, joined us. And the YWCA, for example, provides domestic violence recovery to improve women's mental health. And did you know that Glendale Healthy Kids, while focusing on dental care, picks up on mental health needs in families and refers those Glendale families to us for treatment? All for Health, Health for All is making the bridge between primary care and behavioral health care, and the list goes on and on. So whatever your level of involvement, make sure in every organization you touch and every live you touch, you check on mental health status and make sure you let community residents and families know, we're here to treat and treatment does work. On July 11, I'd like to invite all of you to our agency. We're going to have a family fun fest from 10 to 2. Glendale Coannis will be serving up their great pancakes, and we'll be providing tours and explaining our services and giving kids a chance to learn more about mental health treatment and opportunities for careers. So please join us and thank you for the commendation and your support of mental health in our community.
What's next, Mr. Clark?
Next, we have city council and staff comments.
Well, before that. Two things, one, I'd like to adjourn tonight in memory of Wayne Owain. Hope I'm saying it right. You may have read about him in the newspaper. Probably most of us would not recognize him if he walked right by us. But you would certainly know the characters whose voice that he was, and that was Mickey Mouse. He was the voice of Mickey Mouse for 32 years. Remember the, this must have been before his time, going to the Alex Theater and the cartoons on Saturday. Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck and all the rest grew up on him. So another Glendale native, rest his soul in peace. He'll be missed. I don't know how many hundreds of Mickey Mouse cartoons he must have done over his lifetime. But it was great. He'll be missed, so I'd like to adjourn in his memory tonight.
Ms. Friedman?
I would also like to adjourn tonight in the memory of Gene Dudley. Gene was a neighbor and a friend who was very active in the community on a number of issues over the years. He was a 30-year resident of Glendale. He leaves behind his partner, Richard, and he will, he was loved and he will be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian?
Next is city council and staff comments.
Staff comments, Mr. Weaver.
One thing that I forgot to mention when I was down there, I forgot to thank the over 600 students that helped decorate the Rose Float. Every year, there's at least 600. They come from many high schools and junior highs. We've had as many as 20, 30 high schools and middle schools represented throughout the San Fernando Valley. It's not just Glendale schools, though the Glendale schools are the ones that have the most volunteers and couldn't be done without them. It takes 6, 7,000 hours of man-hours, women-hours to get it decorated. So if anybody's out there, I should have hit when all the kids were here, any looking to decorate this year. The recruitment list will go out in October to the schools. Anybody that thinks they might not be getting one or isn't on our list, please contact me here at City Hall and I'll make sure that you get a notice. They go to all the high schools around here, but just in case. It's a fun time, you meet a lot of new friends from the different schools, just like these youngsters that went out camping did. So again, thank you, students, for what you've done over the years for the Glendale Float Association.
Else, Ms. Friedman?
I would like to ask Public Works to look into implementing as policy a complete streets program, so that as we upgrade sections of road or any Public Works project in the city, we look at implementing improved pedestrian and bike amenities now, as well as evaluating whether an area should be considering traffic calming measures.
Other, Mr. Njerion?
I was unable to attend the technical briefings for the University of Berkeley, UCAL Berkeley, safety studies that were done last week, I think Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And I'd like to have a synopsis, if possible, either for the whole council or at a meeting or, I mean, if you can do it, if it would make sense to us, if you could put it in layman's terms as to what sort of procedures they recommended, as well as how well we stack up with regard to the state-of-the-art features, I think that would be good. We're all sort of along that theme and would like to know how we are doing.
We can absolutely put that together.
Mr. Drayman?
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. The first is, I would turn again to Public Works and if it seems that, Mr. Zern, we have another, you and I exchanged a couple emails over this, another freshly baked outrage, hot off the griddle, related to the flyover construction zone, and forwarded you an email earlier and mentioned that I would raise the issue tonight. If you could sort of clarify where we are, what we know, and how we can stop ending up in the same frying pan each time out there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Drayman, I can just sum it up as quickly as possible, saying there's definitely a miscommunication between what's starting work and reporting to work are. Reporting to work is one thing altogether. Starting work is completely different. So the company that's doing this actually has three separate crews on the job. They're attempting to try to push the project further, but that's not an excuse for breaking our 7 o'clock starting time. So until we straighten this out, I've asked that the inspectors be put out on the job an hour early. If they're so inclined to start before 7 o'clock, we will shut them down and we will stay shut down on their dime until we can get this straightened out.
Okay, I thank you. And if we, were we able to send an email or at least respond to the writers so that they would know?
Yes, Mr. Drayman, Vartan Vartanian, the project managers talked to both, I believe, Judy Angelina Taylor in that particular case.
Terrific, and I thank you very much for that, Mr. Zern. The, my other topic, Mr. Mayor, relates again to the Glendale History Challenge. If we could, could we see the photo from last week? If we could, could we see the photo from last week?
And?
That's a picture of me. That's not the picture I'm looking for.
That?
That was the photo from last week, and the question was, where is it, and what was the year? And we had a winner, and the winner was Sharon Thompson, and the photo is Central Park, circa 1950. And you'll notice that Central Park looked very much like, well, a park at the time, and you can see the original specimen trees in the park, the walkways, and the little building roof in the lower right-hand corner of your screen is part of the recreation center, and you'll see the famous church spires in the...
Presbyterian Church.
That's right. Presbyterian Church across the street. So that was last week's, and she has won for that, a $25 gift certificate to Carousel Restaurant. And this week's History Challenge photo is that building. And the question is, what is it, and what year was it taken? And the winner of this particular, tonight's contest, win a $25 gift certificate to Jack's Bar and Grill. And the idea, ladies and gentlemen, is that you must wait until the end of the meeting to call in to or email this information. Chuck Wyke, you can call him at 818-548-2042, or you can email him at cwyke, W-Y-K-E, at But you have to wait until the end of the meeting to do so.
Can I...
I've got the answer on this.
Miss Thompson get the email?
Yes, yes.
Even to the email?
Can I recommend, as for any tiebreaker, that they have to say what that tower was used for?
Well, actually, we already have rules for that, and if there is a "I," they both win.
Ah.
So it costs me more. However, if you do know what that tower was used for, interesting point.
I do know.
Please include...
I know, the building and the tower.
You don't count.
You can't win.
And that's one last look at the image, Glendale History Challenge, to know your city better. Okay. Good luck.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Told about that building by someone who's been there for many, many years. I demand to be part of the challenge, if I can get one. Okay, well, I want to thank the Montrose Shopping Park Association, the Montrose Chamber, for the wonderful ceremony honoring veterans on Memorial Day up at the Montrose Shopping Park. Then here in the city square, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, and the Citizenship and Patriotism Committee, as usual, they did a great job of putting together the Memorial Day events, very well attended, in both location and very moving tribute to the nation's veterans. Mr. Kosakian, what's next?
Next is items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before the motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent calendar at 5:00.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Next is, next would be oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I did forget, and your comments about the Memorial Day reminded me, and I just wanted to point out the, and I debated whether or not to say anything or not, but our local paper of record, for some reason, thinks that Montrose and the Veterans Memorial there, the Vietnam War Memorial there somehow are in the city of Lakenya to Flint Ridge, and attributed it as part of their celebration. It is very much a part of the city of Glendale, not a part of the city of Lakenya to Flint Ridge, has nothing to do with their Memorial Day run, is in fact the oldest of Vietnam War Memorial in America, and it was a local effort that built that memorial, and it is dedicated in 1968. So just wanted to clarify that for our viewers.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will have some presentations. The first speaker is Danielle, I think it's Anziano, American Cancer Society, the Relay Kickoff.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Very good pronunciation of my last name, it's not an easy one. I serve two hats today, but we're here both representing the Relay for Life of the foothills and Glendale, although it's all for one, American Cancer Society. We wanted to thank you all. We had the Relay for Life of the foothills two weeks ago, which I know is a part of Glendale, and they raised over $100,000 at the conclusion of that event. We were honored to have Laura Friedman there, speaking at the opening, as well as some other honored guests, Dallas Rains and such. And we just wanted to state our gratitude for all of Montrose and those members of Loca Crescenta who are a part of that event. Secondly, last week, we had our volunteers here for the Relay for Life of Glendale, introducing you to the idea of our kickoff that's getting started for Glendale's relay, which, by the way, a little friendly competition between neighboring cities. You guys always seem to beat out foothills, so I'm hoping we can keep up a little competition going there. The kickoff, to kick off the entire event, will in fact be held Wednesday, June 3, and we have teamed up with the Americana to have it at their venue. I'm passing out, I'll pass you all out of flyer. It will be held at their Excelsior Club Room. It's this gorgeous room overlooking the pools at the condos up there. We will have plenty of signage to help you find the place, but we'd like to invite you all to attend, as well as the public to attend. We are already at 23 teams for this event, and our goal is 55, so well on our way to get there. We have, to form a team, just for those who don't know, it's simply a matter of getting together their friends and family, who they don't mind spending the night in camping out with, and raising some money ahead of time. And we know that you all are extremely supportive year after year, even setting up your own tents sometimes, and coming out and spending the night, so we do appreciate that. And we look forward to seeing you at the kickoff, Wednesday, June 3, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30. You can always call Linda Patrick in the City Management Office for more details, or go to relayforlife.org/GlendaleCA. So thank you very much. We hope to see you there, and thank you for your continued support. The city is amazing. Thank you.
You. Next, we have Janet Sturdin, followed by Steve Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor, and Honorable Mayor and Councilman. I come here this evening on behalf of Glendale Arts to invite you to indulge in the arts, and it will be held on June 7 at 7 o'clock at our own Porto's Bakery. We're hosting this event. We'll have wonderful hors d'oeuvres, desserts, coffee bar, all provided by Porto's. You'll be able to sample our Baileys bar, and along with many wines donated by The Wine Cave, which incidentally is going to be opening in Montrose in July. We'll have plenty of music, we'll have a silent auction, and you can actually see behind-the-scenes tour of Porto's Bakery. Now, you ask, why are we having a party? Well, we're having a party at Glendale Arts to celebrate our one-year anniversary. We want to show our gratitude, and of course, we want to raise a little money. And just to let you know, what has our year been like? In our first year in operation, we've launched glendalearts.org, which is our community website. We've sponsored Merry Tubah Christmas and Peking Acrobat. We've also sponsored, in cooperation with the Merchants Association, Salza for Scholarship, and the Glendel Latino, with the Glendale Latino Association. We've also been involved with Relay for Life, Unity Fest, and the upcoming, I'm sorry, and the most recent Film Fest 43 with Paul Krikorian's office. And upcoming, we will be working with GUSD to sponsor their student showcase of their student musicals and performances. We would like to offer to you tickets, two tickets, for you and a companion to come and enjoy all of these things, but also, we'd like to let the people know at home that they can contact the Alex Theater, or they can contact, go on the Alex Theater website, and you can get tickets directly from there. The tickets are only $50. It includes the all-you-can-eat, the music, the wine, the coffee bar, the Baileys, but most importantly, it means that you'll be having the opportunity to celebrate our birthday, and our one-year birthday, and you'll also be helping to improve the arts in Glendale. So I hope you all will be there.
June 7 is my birthday.
Even more reason to come. You and Jamie should be there. I also have some cards here for our other people who did not receive the envelope, and I hope that you all will be contacting me in order to get your free tickets, so please do.
Okay, thank you.
What is the legalities, Mr. City Attorney, of a one-year-old having wine at their birthday?
Thank you very much.
Steve Pierce, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Steve Pierce, and tonight, I actually come to talk to you about fireworks. And we're just slightly more than five weeks away from Crescenta Valley's fireworks show, and it's going to be on Saturday, July 4, and it's going to be at the same location we've had it for the past two years, which is the Loca Crescenta Elementary School, which is right there in Loca Crescenta, at Loca Crescenta Avenue and Prospect. And I'd like to introduce our treasurer, David Myers.
Good evening.
And I think you all know David. The fireworks tickets are going to be $5. Children under 2 are going to be free, so we've kept the price down for the third year in a row, and it's a great bargain. I think all of you who have been, and I think it's mostly you who have come to our fireworks show, realize it's a very safe event and a very professional event. And we have a full carnival activity there, as well as lots of good food. We get about 5,000 people attending this event, and we have tickets going on sale actually next week. You can actually get them at Jay's Maintenance, you can get them at Bob Smith Toyota, the Valley Sun Newspaper, and the CV Chamber of Commerce office, which is located at 3131 Foothill Boulevard. Or you can just go to cvfireworks.com and get the information off of there, and contact me, or anyone at the fireworks association team, and we will get tickets for you. So anyways, we're excited about this. We really appreciate Glendel's support every year. This is the only fireworks event in the city and in our Crescenta Valley community, and it brings out a lot of people, a lot of families. It's a great event, and we always have a good time. Any questions at all? Okay, Artie, I'm going to give you the certificate of liability insurance for the city.
You can pass that on.
Actually, Steve, what time does it start?
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. The gates open at 4 o'clock, and fireworks get on about 5 minutes to 9 o'clock, and it's all choreographed music. And by the way, there will be music there, and we will have an emcee. And you can, what we recommend is you get there early, because if you wait and buy your tickets the day of, the first 5,000 people are going to get in, and after that, you're out on the streets, but you can still see, but you're out on the streets.
So you better get there early.
Get there early, yes.
Stick out a spot.
Yes. And it's a lot of fun, and we really look forward to having each one of you there. Thank you so much.
Leon Mayer, followed by Paula Devine.
Good evening, Mayor, Montero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the library and the friends at the library, and we have a great event coming up on Monday, that's Monday night, June 1. We're going to have two speakers from the central California area, the Fresno area. One is Mark Erax, and the other is Eris Janigian. Now, both of these gentlemen come from a family line that settled in Fresno almost 100 years ago. Fantastic, almost 100 years ago, they settled there, and now they're the grandchildren, and they've been very successful in what they've done. They're writers. Mark is a nonfiction writer, and Eris is a fiction writer. I'll deal with Eris first, because I want to spend more time about Mark. Eris has written a book called Blood Vine, that's his second book, and his first book is River Big, that's the book he's doing this time. And he's been cited by the LA Times Magazine. He's written an article or two for the opinion section of the LA Times. And the other person who's talked about him is Aram Seroyan, who is the son of William Seroyan, a famous playwright. Now, the other person, Mark Erax, has written a book, co-authored, The King of California, which is the cotton story as far as history. He's a California historian, and his book is called West of the West. And interesting enough, Theodore Roosevelt, one of our big environmental and public park presidents, once said that, "When I go to California, I'm not in the West, I'm west of the West." And Aram, I mean, Mark Erax, we all know him from being the keynote speaker at the Armenian Remembrance Day a few weeks ago. But more important, from our standpoint at this time, he has also been an investigative reporter for the LA Times. He's also written for the LA Times Magazine, and he also has been cited by Aram Seroyan as a great writer. So we're glad to bring both these great writers to you, June 1, Monday night, at the Central Library. It's free, and they'll have their books there for you to buy and have signed, and we're looking forward to another great evening. I'd like to report back to you that Robert Shear was well-received at the library. We had a good crowd for Robert Shear, and now we're glad to bring you these two noted Armenian authors. Any questions? As I leave...
What time?
It's 7 o'clock. Well, actually, it's 7 o'clock regular time, 7:30 Armenian time, if I could be indulged. But I do have a special information about Erax and Janigian, which goes beyond our normal flyer, and as I leave, if you're interested in reading it, it's very interesting, I will give it to you, and I'll leave some for the councilman here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Paula Devine, and I'm here to announce the Commission on the Status of Women Annual Women at the Table Leadership Forum. Good news, bad news. The good news is, there's a lot to do in Glendale. The bad news is, it all's happening on the same nights. So our, this leadership forum is for women, and what we're trying to do is increase the pool for candidates for commissions and boards. And this year, we're really fortunate, because we have three great speakers, three women, who probably took different paths to their elected offices. One speaker will be Councilmember Laura Friedman, Ann Ransford from the Glendel Community College, and, help me...
Chris Walters.
Chris Walters, thank you, Laura. I knew I was going to do that, from the Glendel Unified School District Board. Nireen Nahabidian will be our narrator, and she's, of course, formerly from the Commission on the Status of Women, and currently on the school board. There is no admission. It is on June 1, which will be Monday. It is at 6 o'clock, 6:00 to 7:30, so you can go for one hour, two hours, and then another second, 7:00 over to the library if you'd like, but actually, it's going to be a great, a great evening. Thanks to City Clerk Artie Kosakian, food will be provided from Damon's, so it should be a really interesting and fun event. And what the women can learn is all the nuts and bolts about becoming commissioners or board members, how to do it, what is required, and all the different commissions and boards will be in attendance, so we hope to have a very good event. The second announcement event is on June 9, and this one is, we're partnering with Glendel Memorial Hospital, and it's a one-hour lecture on osteoporosis. And Dr. Mamjian is going to be doing the lecture. It's for men and women. The commission focus this year is on women's health, but osteoporosis affects all of us. It's a natural bone density condition that occurs as we age, so we're all going to be subjected to osteoporosis. This lecture is going to be about prevention... This lecture is going to be about prevention, treatment, and all the other information that the doctor can provide. The first 50 will get free gifts, so I hope to see a lot of people there. It's at June 9th, 12:00, noon, at the auditorium at Glendale Memorial. So two events, June 1st, June 9th. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that ends the first half of oral communications. Mr. Kusakian, what's next?
Moving to action items, at 8A is Director of Human Resources regarding proposed ordinance for introduction, amending the salary ordinance for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale for their compensation. At 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction, Glendale Management Association classifications, and 8A2 is an ordinance for introduction, Glendale City Employees Association, GCE classifications.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, this is not, as you're used to seeing, a general cross-the-board S.A.R. increase. This is, in most cases, creation of positions, some in conjunction with some reorganizations and budget impacts, many incorporating savings. Matt Doyle, Director of H.R., is here to answer any questions. Staff is recommending introduction of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, as Mr. Starbird said, this is an introduction, amendment to the salary ordinance for classifications within both GMA and GCE. As Mr. Starbird said, this, all this does is accomplish the establishment of new job titles, new classifications. We have a variety of different reorganizations within each of the affected departments, where we're recommending that these new position titles be established.
It actually, actually is seven different positions in total.
It's, it's 10.
10?
And within the Finance Department, you have three.
Okay.
Three classifications, Deputy Director, Revenue Manager, and Collections Specialist.
And the managers are here, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I'll introduce the ordinance when you're ready.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to introduce the ordinances at 8A1 and 2.
All right, the ordinances have been introduced. Next, Ms. Kusakian.
At 8B is Director of Planning regarding potential code amendment related to subdivisions. At B1 is a motion to initiate code amendments related to subdivisions, Chapter 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, to Mr. Hagani, Director of Planning. Son?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. This is just to initiate the House cleaning items for the subdivision ordinance. If you initiate it, then we'll go work on some details, go to the Planning Commission, and we'll bring to you their recommendations in the near, in the near future. Mr. Kraus is here to answer specific questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Kraus?
I hate to have him go home without.
Oh, he'll be so disappointed.
We normally have lots of questions for him.
We have fun with them during the budget.
I'm sure we'll do so in the future. No questions?
I'll move 8B1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. What's next?
Next, we return to oral communications.
Okay, the first speaker is Shalanda Hall, followed by Elise Calfayan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, City staff, including Mrs. Starbird and Mr. Zern. My husband came before you a couple of weeks ago to talk about the condition of the easement around the Grandview Cemetery. And we would like to thank you, on behalf of the neighbors surrounding the cemetery, we would like to thank you very, very much for addressing this issue so expeditiously. The area is cleaned up totally. It looks so much better, and we really, really appreciate how much you appreciated and quickly addressed our concern. I know that you're used to people coming here and just complaining all the time, but as quickly as we came to complain, we wanted to thank you for doing what you did. And again, thank you very, very much again.
Steve Zern stopped by on his way home after the council meeting and began cutting.
Yes, you came close to. I was having a book club meeting on that Sunday, and you missed it one day, so we actually sent our gardener over again on Friday. But that's okay. I mean, that's part of being a, you know, citizen, that's part of giving back to the city that gives so much to us. And thank you so much again.
Okay, thank you, Shalanda.
Could have moved her up, had we known.
And thanks for your patience. I know you've been concerned for a long time. Elise Calfayan, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and Members of the City Council. On April 8th, the Federal Communications Commission opened public comment on a national broadband plan for our country. The 60-day open comment period for public input expires June 8th, 2009. Our community group, Glendale Organized Against Cell Towers, GOACT, came here in January to ask for a moratorium on wireless installations. At the time, we asked the city to send a message to Washington, D.C., condemning federal laws that restrict local control over wireless installations. The FCC's call for local governments' participation is an opportunity for Glendale to send such a message now. As GOACT mobilized to fight the installation of a wireless facility in a residential neighborhood, and as we educated ourselves about the issues, we realized that the site we objected to was very likely part of a plan to go beyond offering basic cellphone service and compete in offering broadband services. The Federal Telecom Act says municipalities cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. This means that even though our neighborhoods have fiber-optic internet service offered by one provider, and cable internet service offered by another, and these providers' hardware and electrical vaults and wiring throughout residential areas are already there, the city cannot say no to yet another company that applies to come in and build wireless towers all over the neighborhood and on our parkways. The Telecom Act also states that no state or local government may regulate personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. This means that even though wireless facilities emitting high-frequency microwaves are widely believed to have adverse environmental and health effects, we cannot object to them on these grounds. This is an infringement of both individual and municipal rights to free speech. The FCC has taken on the task of formulating a national broadband plan, because many areas of the U.S. still lack high-speed internet service, and because our country is far behind many others in broadband transmission speeds. The regulations currently in place are not bringing our society the best service and the best products. Instead, telecom companies are using federal and state law to bypass local control, impose their infrastructure, and compete for market share in places like Glendale, while rural areas of the country go unserved. We may not need more wireless towers here, and we may not need less efficient wireless broadband service, but federal and state law prevent us from turning anyone away. Federal law is restricting Glendale's control of the built environment and the city's ability to promote the best technology. Glendale and other cities should be allowed to reasonably discriminate in favor of less intrusive and more efficient technologies. We urge the city to affirm this in a comment to the FCC. The federal law is also undermining individual property rights and threatening property values, as it allows potential or perceived hazards to be installed virtually at will by outside companies in any municipality. We urge the city to comment to the FCC that local authorities should be allowed to regulate wireless service facilities on the basis of the health and environmental effects of such facilities. We have proposed language and the link to the FCC Notice of Inquiry and the language to which the city can respond right here. Thank you very much.
If you'll have a seat, we respond after the end of oral communication, so we have some.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Your Honor, Members of the Council, staff, and the audience here and what's left of them, and out there in TV land. My name's Margaret Hammond. First off, I'd like to remind people that the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council will be meeting on Monday, June 1st, at 7:00, at the Boy Scout Auditorium, up on Glenwood, I think it is. I know it's near the cemetery. And so anybody interested in coming and hearing our program and offering any suggestions or other thing, we're very happy for you to come. Public is invited, anybody at all. Don't have to belong to homeowners association or anything like that at all. If you own a home, you're welcome, please come. On Saturday, the Great American Clean Up, we need volunteers, we always need volunteers. I've been doing it for years, and I will be there this Saturday again, I guess at 7:00 for registration, to register people coming in and so forth. So please come, it's a lot of fun, the kids, and, not just the kids, a lot of the older people that come have a great time, too. Thank you for considering that idea. Now, my other thing is the tunnel discussion, about the tunnel. A lot of people call me, a lot of people want to know, and I'm repeating it again. Wednesday, the 26th, there will be a meeting at Landerman. And somebody, some gentleman got up and said that some group he was with, representing, we're all in favor of that. I didn't hear that, and I own property in La Cañada, which would be very much affected.
Margaret, you said the 26th, today's the 26th.
27th.
Oh, the 27th, I'm sorry.
Tomorrow.
Sorry to interrupt.
And, okay, and then Thursday will be the one at the Central Library for Glendale. Oh, I, okay, all right, that, I goofed up here. Will be the Central Library will be the one for Glendale.
Plus tomorrow, at 6:30 at the Central Library is the hearing for Glendale.
Oh, it is, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Well, then what about the, oh, it's tonight, is it, the Landerman?
Well, I don't know about Landerman, I know the one.
Oh, that's what, that was, yeah, I was right. It is Landerman. Yeah, tomorrow night, that's what I did. I crossed up, I forgot that it was tonight.
Always watching your back, Margaret.
Thank you very much. And so, I mean, I think that's pretty important. People that I spoke to, and a lot of people in La Cañada, were like, what the heck? We are interested in that, and we want to have something to say. Now, the other thing was that I had come a couple of times to talk about the shower for the baby, for the mothers, the 15 military moms. I have to tell you, I went there on Saturday, and it was held at the Yelkes Lodge down in Huntington Beach. And there were 15 military moms, whether, actually, a couple of them actually being in service, and then the husbands came of the young soldiers. It was wonderful. It was just so great. I mean, I've heard people say, oh, why bother, it's not, they're not, they don't need it. Yes, they do. I sat with a young couple who have a six-year-old child, and they were very grateful. She had nothing, because of course, she'd been moved back and forth from coast to coast, and so a lot of the things that normal mothers might hold on to, she couldn't do. So they were very grateful for the, all the gifts that people sent. And I do want to tell you that anybody that wants to, I myself went ahead and just got Target gift certificates, 15 of them, and that way, they were able to go and get whatever they want. But each one of them got about $1,200 in gifts of, you know, cribs and baths and everything else. So just keep in mind, and we will be doing it again, but they were very grateful. The only thing was, the young lady, the couple I was sitting with, Kim and Kyle, she, I was afraid was going to be delivering the baby while we were sitting there, and apparently on the way home, I kept saying, I hope somebody knows something about midwifery, but on the way home, apparently she did have to go to the hospital. They had to deliver her to the hospital. Her husband did, he called to let us know that she went in on the way home from the shower to have the baby. And it was a wonderful experience. I mean, it really is something to see those young guys and their wives. They're just wonderful young people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, that closes the speaker's portion of oral communication. Mr. Garcia, if I remember correctly, taught constitutional law at Harvard for many years, prior to coming to the City of Glendale. I would like to have you and your staff take a look at this proposed letter.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we will take a look at it, and insofar as it relates to cell towers and wireless issues, we are anticipating bringing back a report next month, and so we can try to address that issue before the report comes back.
Okay, Brett. Reading the letter makes, it just makes sense. Any other comments, Ms. Friedman?
If I heard Ms. Calfayan correctly, the comment period ends June 8th, so we only have a week to actually comment officially. And if we can make that deadline, I think we should try, and I would go so far as to say that I would, I would support a resolution about the city's rights and the federal government's rules trumping those rights. So if my colleagues would, you know, I think we should bring that back for discussion of actually doing something more formal even than commenting.
Yeah, no, I agree. And the city's rights, but also the private property rights of the individual residential homeowners who are faced with these burdens, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, let me do this. We'll have our office review it and see if indeed the review period does end on that day, and if it is related to wireless and these types of issues to extent we can, well, the council, if there are two of you that want to bring that back for the, for next week, we can do that.
We would need to prep it up for the second.
Right.
That's got to be, because last Tuesday before the deadline.
Your next, your next meeting's the 9th, so.
And we'll also see if there, the League of Cities, or the National League of Cities have prepared.
I can't imagine the League doesn't have some information on it as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, what's next, Mr. Kusakian?
Is there any new business?
There is. There is.
I'd like to move that the Council of the City of Glendale hereby authorizes the City Attorney to institute legal proceedings against an individual to recover the value of medical benefits paid. The party's name is unspecified. As to specify same would jeopardize the city's ability to effectuate service of process. Disclosure of the action will be made upon successful service on the party.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
I would like to move that the City Council hereby concurs in the City Manager's appointment of Just Duran as the interim acting director of Community Development and Housing, effective upon the retirement of Madeleine Blake, June 1st, 2009.
Second.
I would like to comment, I'm very, very pleased that Mr. Duran is going to be the interim director. He's been sitting in the audience, faithfully sitting there, listening to the city council meeting. He's been an extremely hard worker, dedicated, very intelligent man, who's been the man behind the scenes for many years, and so I'm very happy that he's being recognized as the interim director. He's going to do an excellent, excellent job. Roll call, please. Mr. Weaver.
Oh, I'm just wondering, since he stayed this late, not that late, but since he stayed, should we let him introduce himself to the general public?
Why not? Very good idea, Mr. Duran, would you come to me?
Then he's happy not.
He's shaking his head.
You're the one that stayed, you know, we didn't.
Do you like to take the vote? Make it official?
Yeah, let's take the vote first.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, Mr. Duran, he normally addresses the council during the day, so it's good to see him here in the evening.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, Members of the City Council, and thank you for those very kind words and that introduction. I really appreciate that. I've had the honor of having worked under Madeleine Blake for the last 25 years, so I have a very good idea of what the job entails, and I appreciate your vote of confidence, and I know that I have the support of City Manager's Office and your patience and understanding as it might be necessary. And again, thank you.
Quarter century.
Thank you, Mr.
Beg your pardon?
He did, fresh out of, fresh out of college. Congratulations, Mr. Duran. Next, please.
Is there any other new business?
I have an item. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council of the City of Glendale hereby authorizes the city attorney to file a notice of appeal in the matter of Edmund Ovecepian versus the City of Glendale, case number C V 08-00194. Continued prosecution of the appeal will be based upon a review of the complete transcript of the trial proceedings, which has not yet been obtained, and analysis thereof by previously retained outside counsel.
Comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn in memory of Jean Dudley and Wayne Alwyn?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Secondly, you are adjourned.